We're going to start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For its purpose, the board will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal preoccupation, diversity in viewpoints, a sufficient understanding of issues, strategic leadership more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and chief executive roles, collective rather than individual decisions, further future rather than past or present, and proactivity rather than reactivity. So have a roll call.
Johnson, here. Moen.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bitovic.
Here. Think we need approval of the amended agenda?
I have a motion to amend the agenda.
Motion to amend the agenda.
So I'd make a motion that we amend the agenda to add BBB policy convincing two and two one.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, and a vote. Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
All right.
Bitovic.
I. Motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda.
Will be approved then.
Second.
Vote. Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
All right.
Bitovic.
I. Now the fun stuff. Dr. Bitovic, will you introduce our artists or performing artists?
Yes, Danny Trimmel.
Danny's handling it all. Thank you, Danny.
All right. Hello, board members. Thank you very much for allowing us time during this meeting to celebrate arts here in our school district. I'm going to read something from one of our art students at the high school, Matt Karangozzo. It could be your type of wrote up how art class has affected his life. So this is from Matt. Education in the arts is important for people interested in the arts as a career and beyond. Metal smithing has become a strong addition to my many interests and ambitions, so much so that I have created a home studio where I can continue my love for this art. Miss Jean, this Kuzensky, has taught me techniques and applications in a way that I now feel confident to pursue metal smithing on my own. Some of my best memories in high school are in the art room making something out of metal. I feel like we've made an inspiring place where I can create what I want and learn how to make it look amazing. It gives me so much confidence having these art skills and makes me feel like I can use these in my future. And now with my own studio, I feel like I can truly make anything in the world. That's from Matt. I think that's just a very, very, very small glimpse at how arts has affected many of the lives in our school district. I even know in my own personal life, when I see students walk in with instruments, I just get excited. It's just so many different emotions, feelings. And so it's a powerful thing. And I just really encourage you all to step into one of our music classrooms or art classrooms or take a look around at all the amazing art that we have here tonight. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Dave Williams. He's the high school band director. And I will also say that Kat is going to show a slideshow during this performance of high school, elementary, and middle school. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, I'm Dave Williams. I am the new band and orchestra guy at high school. We have some of our jazz band students here. I'm going to give them just a chance real quick to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Jesse. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Landon. I'm a freshman.
I'm Nathan. I'm a junior.
I'm Tyler. I'm also a junior.
I'm Delaney. I'm also a junior.
I'm Rose. I'm a senior.
I'm David. I'm a junior.
So we have a tune that we're going to play while we're watching this slide, the arts presentation. I did want to let you know, this is one of the tunes that we warm up with each day. It starts off with just a quick little melody, and then each student is going to get an opportunity to do an improv solo. What that means is they're making that up on the spot. This isn't a solo that they've rehearsed. They're creating this on the spot. Sometimes notes are going to sound awesome, and sometimes it's going to be like, oh, that sounds really dissident and cool. It's the way it's supposed to go. And then we'll play the familiar melody, and then some more students will solo, and then we'll put in melody, and that's how this presentation is going to go. This particular tune entitled Getting Started. One. One, two, three.
Very nice. Thank you so much. It's beautiful. Hello?
Thank you very much.
Just an aside, since it's Arts Month, I received an invitation from Angela Seals at the cultural office. Trying to look at the exact title. I've got so much paperwork here. Lead project coordinator for Arts Vision 2030. And she has just wanted us to know that we are invited to Wednesday, October 27th. I know that's just next week, but it's just from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Golden Room on Nevada Ave. And we can introduce somewhere, or I can send it to you guys. It's a 10-year cultural plan for the Pike's Peak region. And just because Manitou is so involved with the arts, because we as a board have been supportive of the arts and our vision, sounds like there will be snackies and a cash bar from 5:00 to 5:30, and just pick up your copy of the vision, and you can mix and mingle with other local leaders and creatives. And then from 5:30 to 6:00, there will be a formal program, and that's it. So if anybody's interested. Natalie will be attending. Excellent. Anything else you want to add about that?
No.
Oh, well, I read. So good for me. But I thought it looked really interesting. If I have some time, I might text you and come with, if that's okay. Just I mean, hour of my time to get a little bit of culture in my life. That'd be excellent. Public comment. We have two people speaking this evening, I think.
Yes, the first one was Steve Garfski electronically, but he's not logged on to any. Oh, very. I didn't see. Thank you. You're here. Great.
So before I call you guys up, I have to read the public comment information, which is during times of general public comment at regular meetings, comments and questions may deal with any topic related to the board's conduct of schools. Comments at special meetings may be related to the call of the meeting. During times of public comment on specific agenda items, comments shall be confined to the topic of the agenda item being considered by the board. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their free speech rights reasonably or responsibly. The board encourages the discussion of all personnel matters to be conducted in session. Time limit. Comments from audiences limited to three minutes per speaker with no immediate response from the board, except when deemed necessary by the board president. A single spokesperson should be selected by groups or organizations desiring to address the board on an agenda topic in order to avoid presenting repetitions of information. When there's a large number of speakers to be heard, lighting officer may shorten the time for each individual speaker and may limit the amount of time for all speakers. Any questions? I'll keep time just on my handy-dandy iPhone that I just broke while running around during.
Right. So Garfski, if you'd like to come up here. Table? No?
Well, I wasn't, I'm not sure what the comment is. I wasn't prepared to make a public comment tonight. I just wanted to.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Oh, you just want to come say hi?
What's that?
You just wanted to say hi?
Yeah. Perfect.
What is the comment? I'm not sure.
If you want to make a comment, so the public is invited.
Oh, yes. I'm worried about making a comment to see what the process was.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were.
I didn't want to make a comment. I just wanted to attend.
Great.
So I'm here just to.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you for coming. So we have.
So I have Ariella Rong.
Hi, friends.
Hi. When you are ready, let me know, and I'll start the timer, and then I'll give you a 10 seconds when you've got 10 seconds left.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm ready.
Okay.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Ariella Rongi, and I'm a parent of a high schooler and a middle schooler in the district. I'm also a member of the DAC as a parent representative for Epass Elementary. I would like to impress upon the board and on the community the importance of this upcoming bond initiative. After speaking to a large cross-section of the Chupita Park Cascade and Green Mountain Falls community at a recent community event, I was happy to hear consistent, strong support for the bond and for the district and for our students. Community members said things like, we always vote for education, and the Manitou district is part of our family's history here, and funding our schools should always be a priority. We all know that deferred maintenance is more expensive in the long run, and our school buildings, athletic facilities, and historic features like the MSES auditorium require upgrades and maintenance now. With other schools in the region in better upgraded facilities, continued deferral will lead to the loss of in-district and choice families, will be less attractive to the best and brightest educators, and will make coaches less apt to want to work here. Last year, I watched a student athlete from another school break his leg playing soccer on our lucky grass field. Was it the uneven grass which led to a misaligned footpath while battling one of our players for the ball? I cannot say, but I can tell you about the comments athletes from other schools make to our players about our facilities. They are unimpressed with the uneven track, the uneven field, and the lack of locker room access near the fields. Our kids are embarrassed, even though they know and understand the Herculean efforts made by our coaching staff and the grounds and facilities team to make it be as good as it can possibly be. We also have the best view in the state, and many of our kids and staff don't have the opportunity to see it during the school day. As a camp director and outdoor educator, quality outdoor learning spaces, as well as the ability to even look out a window and see the natural world, help students learn because access to green space also supports our students' mental health, which is something that we, as a district, as a state, as a country, and as a world recognize is of significant importance right now. To leave the best grant money on the table because we can't commit to thinking and dreaming big for our kids and for the next five generations of kids would be a travesty. Please support the bond and our kids on November 2nd. We owe it to our kids, to our longstanding committed educators, and to our entire community to say yes to foresee. Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Can I get a motion? I guess. Any discussion on the consent? I will now. So. Vote.
Johnson.
Moen.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bitovic.
I. Superintendent's report.
So Spirit Cross, we'll be here to present our annual report for Buildings and Grounds.
Well, first of all, thank you for giving me a little bit of time to give you an update. It's great to do this every year and show you a little bit about what we're doing, not just the text that you see, but a couple of pictures as well to see some of the improvements we're making in Buildings and Grounds. So Capital Projects, case six, we have the front office remodel that's been completed over there. Long overdue, and that was a great project. I will see Pete Chaloski did a wonderful job splitting Maria's office into two to have a new space for Jenny, the assistant principal. Then the library relocation remodel, which was a really exciting one, really putting a library space into that elementary that has been lost over a few years. That's that picture top left there. That was carpet paint and really getting some furniture in there that works well for the space. We also have that temporary trust support. That's been completed as well. That's that picture in the bottom left. That's definitely a temporary support there, but there's definitely significant work that needs done in that space to get us where we need to. That's supporting that patio is what I've always called it, kind of the atrium entrance there at the front on Pawnee. U P E S, temporary roof patch. Obviously, that roof is far gone at this point, unfortunately, but we continue to patch that to make sure, to make sure that we really damage control at that point to keep things visually in decent shape. Thank you. Capital Project 612, we have window replacements at the middle school. That's actually the bottom picture there. That's in the media center. Same thing in the office area. There's just been compensation in those for many years that replacing those. We'll clean that space up quite a bit. Emergency lighting, we're just working through some bugs. There was actually a battery backup system for the entire building that is just really not a great use. Then you have problem, if that goes down, you have problems in the whole building versus individual battery backups throughout the building. Temporary roof patch, that's been complete, same thing that you passed, but this one's been finished. Again, just patching those issues that really are scattered throughout the building. The high school, we have gym window replacement. That's that top picture there. Just it's been a little bit more challenging to find those blocks and replace those. But again, that's one of the first things you see as you come around the building. That's in process. You can see those are all labeled if they're in process or complete. But boiler burn tube replacement, again, that was one that kind of popped up on us. We're just seeing more and more that there's a significant amount of maintenance that was deferred over the past. I have a wonderful HVAC technician, Paul Presta, that is helping us sort through and really taking care of our systems to a whole nother level. So we've been able to really move in the right direction there. Commons restroom remodel ADA again in process. That's one where we're just trying to tackle small ADA issues as we're able to with the capital budget and little things with the general fund as well. But just trying to systematically move through that in areas that are most important. Of course, they're all very, very important. Next slide. District capital projects. Every other year, we do all the seal coating on all the asphalt you'll see here. But every year, we do our crack fill and striping the lot. So that's a significant one when you're actually sealing all of the lots in the district and makes a big impact visually, but also just takes care of that surface. And then athletic turf roller, we're moving to a new process of, you guys all know, we've been plowing fields for games, which is great to allow that opportunity for students, but it's meant that it's pretty hard on the field. So to be able to have a turf roller to really spread that out and not have to hand tamp all the ruts from trucks, it's hard to avoid that. So a great piece of equipment that we're picking up. Transportation electrical panel replacement. Unfortunately, those panels are far outdated and are in need of significant repair. So it's a full replacement on those panels there to service that bus barn and all of the buses that need to be plugged in and pulled there. Other projects, just kind of miscellaneous outside of capital would be the nurses' station flooring and paint at the elementary school. That's that bottom left picture. That's kind of what started getting through that office remodel. But again, just yeah, flooring and paint there. MSES, three classrooms painted, and then same thing at the high school, just moving through. We moved through a document again systematically on the areas that need paint the most, make sure we're rotating through those. MSMS media center carpet, that's that big picture there. It made a huge impact. That was our worst carpet in the district by a long shot. So yeah, it really needed it. It's great in there. We're still finishing the pit area because there were a couple of options there. But and it's been hard to get supplies and carpets really challenging. So yeah, moving through there. And then just working through the master facility plan and the bond issue. Really, that was a piece that was pretty exciting for me, definitely some important work, but really providing feedback on the documents and assessments and working through that with the whole crew, really. And then the best grant application process. I'll admit that was new to me and a pretty exciting process and opportunity. Prioritizing needs and then community building tours, again, bringing people in and informing everyone that was able to come into our meetings. One, just real quick, kind of our day staff and then night staff, just their priorities. I just wanted to really note that we are still making in session disinfecting for the day staff a high priority, making sure that we can just really have the cleanest and safest buildings around. But they're also moving through lunch, breakfast, cleanup, trash disposal, and then there's inventory of supplies, and they place all the orders in the building. And then just really supporting the building through the day, emergencies, all the work orders that come through and trying to get those done in order of the way they come in or in the order of urgency, I guess I would say. And then preventive maintenance. Urgency, I guess I would say, and then preventive maintenance programs, trying to make sure that we maintain these buildings to the best of our ability. Evening staff, again, similar similar thing. One thing that's changed is we have changed the start time of that staff. And they start at 1:00 PM. It's great. It allows them to spend a little bit more time with. Other staff in the building, students, just interface and and again, thinking about relationships being important. It's great to bring that crew in. So they are trashing a little bit earlier. It's a thing that requires support of teachers and it's it's been going really well. And then just a white down vacuum and again, in red, the sanitizing disinfecting and we're going above and beyond that still. Using multiple methods and going far past what the recommended minimum amount of. Of disinfecting and that's with UV one, seven, ten and our backpack sprayers. And just making sure that I'm evaluating where we are and where we need to be. So investigating what other school districts are doing to to really deal with some of the challenges we're facing. And just different ways to do things really. Developing full new staff training and documentation. That's something I'm still trying to work through from the past. I think that's been work that's been. Overlooked at times and I I'm excited to continue to develop that. Another develop here is a universal preventative maintenance program. Making sure everyone's doing the same thing, covering the same basics. Everyone's doing a great job right now, but kind of doing it their their own way. So making sure we're hitting everything. Really globally. Is the way I would say. And then continuing to focus on a positive culture with high expectations. It's important to me to make sure we have a positive culture in our team. And that's that's always tough to get when you're you have high expectations. So working with the crew and that's really training and that's where these Wednesday late starts have been great. For departments to be able to get together as well because that's been tough in the past. And then just defining where we want to be and where we want or and how we want to get there. So just tracking our progress, making sure I don't get into a rut and we don't get into a rut. That's that's it. Thank you very much.
Last time I spoke to you all, it was via Zoom and I'm not very good at computers. I've got everybody else in the school district to help me out. So. Glad to be here and be live with you. The first thing I want to cover for you tonight, I'll just give you an update on security and safety and security. Next slide, Kat. We are still currently using the I love you guys foundation standard response protocol. There are some components to those and that's part of our safety drill. So. I'm going to go over a couple of them and then I'm going to go and show you a seven minute video because it just makes a lot more sense when you see the video. We've sent it out to parents. We're in the process of sharing it with students, sent it out to staff just so everybody's on the same page. And then you guys, if you get questions, then you'll maybe have some answers from the public. The first drill that we'll do is a hold and basically that's just clear the hallways and keep everybody in the classroom. That can be done if we have a medical emergency and we have to have a student transported to the hospital. If we have an irate parent screaming in the hallway or an irate dispute between two students. We don't want people witnessing that and egging people on and things like that. So that's just a simple business as usual. Classes continue on except we just keep everybody in the classroom instead of in the hole. The next one is called secure and that is formerly known as a lockout. If there's a dangerous animal or a dangerous situation. Outside or near the campus. We've done that in the past, like if a bank robbery suspect is downtown Manitou wandering the street. Simply just go into a lockout. Nobody in or out of the building. It's a little more challenging this year because we have a lot of outdoor learning. So now we have to take an extra step to find those outdoor learning spots. And bring students and staff inside to keep them safe. Basically. Business as usual inside. A unique challenge for us is we have the silk building in middle school and high school. So the only difference that makes is. You can pass inside buildings, but you can't pass between buildings. And so sometimes we may just have to go to a holding holding classroom if it's. Period change time or something like that. The next one is a lockdown and that means something really bad is happening in school. So we lights out. Get the kids out of the way, have them be quiet. We check the doors, make sure nobody's coming in. The officers and the security officers will address that threat. And take care of business. They will not be released unless school staff. Or security or police officers, first responders are the ones that are releasing them. We have an evacuation. That's if we have to evacuate to another location or whatever and reunify with parents and whatnot. And then we have a shelter in place if there's tornadoes and. Whatever they say tsunamis, we're not going to get that here, but you know what I'm saying. I never say never.
Why is this stuff important? There are things the adults don't like to talk about, but if things happen at school, I need to have a plan. And I need to know that the adults have a plan. So I'm going to talk about the standard response protocol. It's all about these simple actions. The first action is hold. Stay in your classroom, clear the hallways. The second action is secure. Get inside, lock outside doors. The third action is lockdown, locks, lights out of sight. The fourth action is evacuate. A location will be announced. The fifth action is shelter. The hazard and safety strategy will be announced. So let's get started and learn about hold.
Hold in your classroom or area, clear the halls. Hold in your classroom or area, clear the halls.
Something is happening in the halls and the school needs to get it sorted out. So stay in our classroom even if the bell rings.
Try to do classwork, but remind your teacher to lock and close the classroom door.
Won't I be marked tardy for my next class?
Not during a hold.
And if I'm in the cafeteria or the gym?
Depending on what's happening, you might be asked to stay in your area if you aren't in a classroom.
Unlike a lockdown, a hold can be released with a P A announcement.
Students, all clear. The hold is released. All clear. The hold is released.
I'm James. I'm a school resource officer. Kids, get inside, hustle.
Secure. Get inside, lock outside doors. Secure. Get inside, lock outside doors.
Why are we doing it?
We're doing this because something is happening in the neighborhood near the school and we have to get you guys inside. Could be crimes out there, could be riots, could be a dangerous animal, could be zombies.
James, zombies aren't real.
You don't know that.
Here's what happens. Get everyone inside. But inside, you just keep everything normal. Even class changes stay on schedule except between buildings.
Initially, nobody can come in or go out of the building.
Depending on what's happening, your teacher may ask you to text your parents and tell them not to freak out. School is happening just like normal and if they show up, they probably won't be let in anyway.
That's right. Nothing to see here.
Chill. Secure is just staying inside.
Sometimes it's a pain like when school gets out or during lunch, but usually you won't notice much.
What about lockdown?
This is serious. Pay attention because something bad is happening in the school.
Oh, things adults don't want to talk about.
First, I'm going to talk about stuff that we do know, data and research about attacks at schools. Then I'm going to talk about what to do depending on where you are. First of all, seventy percent of these are over within five minutes. Ninety percent are over in ten minutes.
Heavy.
First, let's look at one thing that they have learned. An attacker has hardly ever gotten through a locked classroom door, hardly ever.
Where'd you see that?
Get on the web and look at the Sandy Hook Commission Report. The FBI has some stuff too.
Lockdown, locks, lights out of sight. Lockdown, locks, lights out of sight.
So the teacher will lock and close the door.
Right. Then what happens?
I got this. First, we're going to get out of sight of the corridor window.
What else are you going to do?
Then we're going to get low on the floor. I'm going to make sure I can't see out of the corridor window. Then I'm going to take a deep breath and focus. This is an important five or 10 minutes. I'm even going to silence my phone or turn it on do not disturb.
Turn off your data and wifi too. This helps the first responders keep their internet access.
But can I text my parents?
Yes, but not at first. Your teacher will probably have you wait about five minutes until it's safe. If it's safe, a few of you at a time can text your parents.
Here's what detects. I'm okay. We're in a lockdown. I'll update you every five minutes. I'm going to add this. I love you guys.
Text your parents, don't text your friends, don't post on social media, duh. Here's one thing, a lockdown can be scary and it's probably going to last a long time. I need you to support each other, listen to your teacher. What else do you keep in mind?
Don't open the door for anyone.
What if they say it's the police like this? Police, open the door.
I don't know if it's really the police or someone trying to fool me. So I'm not going to open the door for anybody or even say anything.
Right. Law enforcement or an administrator will unlock and open the door.
Same thing with an announcement on the P A. You're going to stay here until administrator or police comes and opens the door.
What about the fire alarm?
When we're in a lockdown, we're going to treat a fire alarm a little differently. Unless it's really a fire in the room, we're going to initially stay put. Although I might look at other ways to get outside.
If you're in the hallway cafeteria or gym, try to get behind a locked door or try to get out of the building. Remember, five minutes, so go quick. Think about other locking doors like staff bathrooms and some offices.
The student bathrooms are probably a last resort. No locking doors, but at least you can get out of sight. This is a good time to talk about evacuate. Sometimes we just need to leave the building. Depending on what's happening, we might be asked to leave our stuff. Or we may be asked to bring it. If your phone's in your pocket, keep it there.
If you hear lockdown and aren't in a locked classroom, remember self evacuation is another option.
That means getting out of the building and going to a safe place quickly.
Once you're there, call your parents, tell them you're okay. The school might also give you an emergency number to contact.
What happens when police release a lockdown?
Police or an administrator will open the door and begin the classroom evacuation. Now, don't be surprised if they are a little loud or they keep shouting, show me your hands.
Got it. They're going to be loud and keep my hands empty and visible. Can I bring my stuff?
Probably not, just what's in your pockets.
They'll probably bring us to a secure assembly area like a cafeteria or a gym before moving us to where our parents can pick us up.
At the assembly area, don't be surprised if an officer searches you. They just want to make sure there's nothing dangerous out there.
Got it. They're going to be loud. They're going to search us.
If you think about it, you're probably going to be stressed, so it's going to feel a little more intense than it really is. They are probably going to be a little stressed. They probably don't know you, but we all have the same goal in mind to keep you safe.
So what you're saying is cut everyone a little brain and we can actually help reduce their stress and our parents' stress.
Okay, there's one more action.
Let's talk about shelter.
Different schools might do different things, but here are some examples of what might be announced.
Tornado, get to the storm shelter. Earthquake, drop cover and hold. Hazmat, seal doors and windows. Tsunami, get to higher ground.
This is important. I was in fourth grade at Sandy Hook Elementary School on December fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. I got out. My little brother was at Sandy Hook too. He got out, but it was a close call. My older brother and sister were at the middle school. It was a tough day for them too. So I just need to have a plan, have some options.
And you need to know, the adults have a plan too. I was the school resource officer at Arapahoe High School in two thousand and thirteen when the attack happened there.
I'm going to ask you to do one more thing. When you go home today, talk to your parents. Tell them about what you learned today.
Alrighty, just review on staffing levels. I'm your safety and security director. We have one school S R O, school resource officer for the entire district. She is housed here at the high school, but can respond to middle school, elementary, youth house, wherever if needed to be. We also have three security officers. We have them at each elementary school and then this I consider a shared campus because our buildings are all together. And the resource officer is usually up here most of the time. We also work jointly with Stuart and his crew and the mental health team because a lot of stuff that involves us involves them along with the principals and the rest of my admin team. So we're trying to keep communication lines open. We I meet regularly with Dr. Domain and the principals. I share an office with the S R O. Monthly reports are done to us by our our security company provides us a really thorough monthly report like sixty seven pages or something sometimes. And so what then I do is narrow it down for just the principals and the admin team that gets that report just to get a brief synopsis. But it's important for them to be thorough. So if we have the same violations of unlocked doors or windows, then we can at least address the problems that we're seeing. The S R O does a monthly report. I also do one. And then I meet quarterly with all of the security directors in the Pike Peak region, which is very helpful. So we can talk about challenges that we're having and. Other solutions and things like that. What we're doing right now, we spent a lot of time dealing with Safe to Tell, talking about crisis health education. Dr. Domain brought around to this district. We continue to do mandatory reporting training. And all of us are on board as far as when we need to mandatory report. We spent a lot of time doing D H S referral training as well as to when we need to report just so that we can keep our kids safe. Kat helped us get hooked up with digital citizen training last year and that's all the social media training that we try to do at the middle school levels. Sometimes I think we may do it at the high school as well and we usually have the crimes against children, internet crimes against children unit sometimes. Come in and give an extra presentation. Speaking of that, with the parent connection meeting with P H C. The I C A C unit is going to give a parent presentation to parents to teach them how to deal with. How do you check your children's Snapchat or Instagram and some of those other ones that I don't even know about? Because otherwise that'll help keep our kids safe too. So I'm really excited. That should be coming in November. We do our monthly safety drills with our first responders and we do actual debriefs and evaluations. And then make the improvements that we can each month. And then for each event, like whether it's homecoming or bonfire or whatever, we started doing operation plans just because it makes it easier to. Have a plan in place so that if something goes south that day, we're ready to respond to it. Go ahead. Still researching better camera systems. The ones we have now, thank God we can at least view the surveillance for like a month or so. But there's always something better out there that can give us better coverage. For visitors that come into our school buildings, last year we didn't have any. We're still doing the Raptor check ins and if there is something. Fishy on the Raptor alert, myself, security officers and whatnot, get an alert to just kind of come to the the main office and check out what the problem is. There may be a problem, maybe not. It's just something that came up on the screen. Security officers now have the access to view cameras and help us with the video surveillance if we're trying to find some information. And that frees up some of my time and the S R O's time. We also said do threat assessments and suicide assessments, help out with those sometimes. And then we have a great line of communication with our D H S supervisor because sometimes if you just call the D H S hotline. We just need certain information. So we have a great rapport with the actual supervisor. Along with the B con team, which is the mental health team for El Paso County that would respond to our schools if we needed that. And the safe passages supervisor. This year, what's new is we're trying to look for alternatives instead of just doing suspensions and we're trying to find some other programs. Myself and the S R O are going to go to a training called Second Chance. And what it is, it's an alternative program to just suspending kids for tobacco use, vaping and things like that. We'll be able to get this online program and that may be part of the restorative justice piece for the students. We also are looking at Manitou based Pike Peak restorative practices because that's local. I think Mr. Hall is going to do that one coming up soon. It does cost a little bit of money, but sometimes if it's local, it just makes it a lot easier. We are also looking and we've used at the middle school last year, neighborhood justice as a resource for restorative justice. Where the parents go down to the fourth judicial district's office at the neighborhood justice site and just get some mediation between students. And we can use it for parents, teachers, whatever. We're sending a few students to what was known as teen court. It's now called Ford Evolution and that's a peer based program. If you're not familiar. We send them a referral to that. If the teens don't comply with what the teen court says they have to do as far as their consequences. Then they go to the the judge jury real real court system. And then parking, as we know, isn't always an issue here. And so Mr. Hall and. On a Conrad, we started using parking summonses, you know, like verbal warnings and stuff. And then we're keeping track of those and then Mr. Hall and Anna Conrad deal with the consequences if we have repeat violators, whether it's staff or students. We did get another threat assessment grant this past year and really that's just dealing with more training for our staff. We're still, we had a lot of new folks come to our safety team, so they had to do the FEMA trainings. I think I'm one or two shy of getting those people all caught up. Still updating the emergency plans of all the new names and new maps and things like that from the renovations and whatnot that have been gone. Radio training has been phenomenal this year. We're finally using our radios. We've got 12 new radios from that safer grant. Just so you know, some of the radios have this red button. And what happened if there's something happening at the middle school, Mr. Katie can push the orange button. And then that will hook and bridge the admin channel with the middle school channel. So we're aware. We also have a system placed on computers where we can radio in to certain people that have the interface on their computer. If we want the entire district district to be on an admin channel. And we can all communicate to each other, which is really important, especially for Mr. Briggs Hill up at U Pass where sometimes cell service is quite a bit sketchy sometimes, correct? So that's going to be really helpful. And the other piece of the safer grant is if a nine one one dispatcher gets a phone call. That she or he or she thinks requires us to be able to communicate with first responders. We will be on the same channel as those first responders, which is going to be really important. Alright, the next one's that. Oh, we have a new SRO, I'm sorry, you can keep that slide up. We have a new SRO from Manitou PD. She's been through SRO school, so she knows how to be an SRO. She's been to youth crisis intervention training, which is really important in case she has to deal issues with the mental health inside and just be understanding and know how to deal with that stuff. So what's keeping us busy? Not too, too busy, huh, principals? Every once in a while, really, compared to other schools, when I listen to the other security directors, I'm like, I'm glad I work in Manitou, but we are seeing some issues with vaping and marijuana stuff. Safe to tell tips. If you haven't heard of the Devious Licks TikTok challenge, that's a challenge where each month the students are supposed to do something, whatever the TikTok challenge says, and then post it on their Snapchat or Instagram or what have you. Ours pretty much has just been minimal damage compared to other districts. Soap dispensers being ripped off wall, thrown in the toilet or thrown out, some items being stolen from the schools. But again, it's a lot of work for Stuart and his crew unfortunately. And it's helped, you know, with the safety stuff, it's COVID. We want to be able to wash our hands, so they have to get around to it quickly and replace these dispensers and whatnot. But again, compared to other schools, I think we're doing not as bad, so grateful for that. Any criminal case that comes in, the SRO handles that. We stay in our lane and she can stay in her lane to handle those. And then we've also been helping now with the vaccination clinics and facilitating those. Future plan, we're just going to continue to look at upgrades, card key access, dusted dials, camera systems if we can get it, depending on the bond. We're going to continue our relationship with our first responders. We're looking at cross-training with first responders and our security team because that has never happened. And I think it's important that they need, the security team needs to know what our first responders are going to do when they get here. And then we're as a team with an admin team, we've done just a couple minor radio tabletop exercises, if you will, but we want to keep working towards those. You know, everyone wants to start with the big one, but we really have to start small so we can learn to communicate and kind of follow the plan. That's all I have for you. Any questions?
Yep, very thorough.
Thank you for your time.
The next four are yours, Elizabeth.
Need to a motion to credit the school district in all four schools. It really is a formality and we are credited. We have, if you pull up that document, they carried over accreditation from the last time we had a new school performance framework, which was before I arrived in the school district. So we maintain, we maintain that now for two years. So just need a motion from you all.
I have a motion to approve the accreditation. I have a second.
Johnson.
I think I can move your discussion.
I'll ask if there's any discussion, okay. Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
The next item is the monitoring report and thanks, Jack. I've got a couple of typos and I'm going to, I'm going to let you know which ones those are. There's, there's two different documents in there, one with update correction. That's the one I'm going to refer to and they're minor and I'll point them out for you. So the first one is the date was wrong under first paragraph. It should have said, close of business on Wednesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. It's the twenty-two. These are the unpacked and statements on that, we go through those. Some of the key indicators that we have there are from incredible years. The kindergarten, social emotional learning curriculum. We also have, these are all self-recorded by the teacher. Some other indicators here connect to. Move down to indicator B. We've got Helping Kids Colorado. This is not rated. And the previous one just had a blank. It's not rated because we haven't received the results of that survey. Just as an aside, I can tell you that several districts across our, our county and our state have decided to stop administering the Helping Kids Colorado survey. There are some items that have over the, over time morphed and become more controversial topics. Right now from middle school, we give one that is sort of a basic questionnaire, but the sex, the high school includes other topics. In fact, I know Gary, Gary got a question from Karen. Parents can opt out of it. So right now you're not going to see any ratings. My understanding is that these come in in a couple of months. So this is just one of those monitoring reports. We only give this every two years. So I think there's no discussion that unless you all want to have it around that particular assessment. Some districts have decided to take out completely the, the items that are more controversial and for example, it might ask if we've been sexually assaulted by a family member. So just, just something for us to be thinking about. So all I did in this, but not rated there. Elementary school in terms of attendance, I think it's, all of these indicators this year are a little bit different because we had to take attendance out very differently last year. So even though we're still quarantining now, I think our attendance is more after it in some ways because we had, maybe a child was at home, they checked in and so we had to code those a lot of different ways last year. So it's, it's, that's the percent that we report to the state, but you can see the year before just how different, different those are. I can tell you that our school, our school administrators have developed, we have developed truancy processes to, to support families to be in school more consistently. And so that's some great work that's going on at our schools with our counselors, being proactive versus reactive. So I did highlight indicator number three. As it says, initially it said met, but Jack, thanks for pointing that out. At ninety-eight percent, that would not have been met. But I have it highlighted here because ninety-eight percent would be so high for a high school. A more typical would be about ninety-five percent. And so I didn't want to change that on this indicator, this monitoring report without you all saying yes, we approve that for next year. So I kept it the same, so it was consistent, but I just wanted to show that with you all.
Those numbers that we set, are those metrics that the board sets?
Yeah.
Or is that something from the state? Because I don't, I don't have any idea with that number, because ninety-eight percent is a hugely high number.
Yeah, ninety-eight is huge. That would be, that's, that's even hard, that would be hard to achieve where elementary schools do it.
So does the state set that though?
No, they don't set that, we just kind of set it. When we, we first did these monitoring reports, just even, like if you look at the one above it, increase from the previous year. I don't really think that's an accurate way to gauge that because you can have a really high percentage rate and say, gosh, we did everything. So if you all are okay, I don't think there are specific attendance targets at the state. There's best practices for, for grade levels. But in terms of monitoring, how, what would you all like to see there?
Best practices, I might make sense to try to shoot for those.
So what I'll do here, if you all are okay with it, I'll make a note to come back with you all for this. Not to re-report on this monitoring report, but to have specific metrics that we're shooting for because percent increase does not doesn't really help us out. So, so I changed that to did not need. I would love ninety-eight percent at high school, that would be fantastic. That's not.
Ninety-eight percent. I think, I mean, I think ninety-three is reasonable and I think ninety-five is a, is a above.
That's right.
But there's.
From data that I'm just going off data that I look at.
Sure, so there's best practices numbers, we should just try to put those in, admit that there's something that's widely accepted, usual customary, there's no reason to go. Re-put the wheel on that.
Like I would say, we've been looking at that two thousand and nineteen year where it was, you know, more typical. Ninety-eight percent is not consistent for elementary. So yeah, we can, I'll present that to you all at a later meeting. And then just looking at discipline. This is, this was interesting to see an increase at district's middle school. Leslie's probably seen that for the first time. I can tell you that sometimes this does, this can happen in a time when there's new administration trying to re-morse and calibrate the school. So I suspect and know that this will go down just by the nature of that. And then on the reverse, the high schools was significantly lower. And I think we, we know we had a COVID, COVID year. So it's an anomaly to see middle school at sixty-six and high school.
High school ninth, which is crazy low. It's great.
It was crazy low.
It was low.
We're back in business now.
Well, they're, they're in attendance.
They're in attendance.
So we want to make sure that one doesn't say improves on previous year, otherwise Mr. Hall is going to be something.
That's right. So, you know, kind of looking back, and this is days, this is not number of incidents, so this is number of days, which is going to connect to a policy later on.
Well, and I think when you're talking about discipline, you're going to, assuming you're looking at incidents. Thinking and before and looking at just academic data.
Yeah. And this does connect to Danny's presentation around restorative practices, mediations. We just had an incident at the high school between two students and trying to mediate, but that's where nothing else happened to get. So it's, they're all connected and reactive versus reactive. And that's it, and then just the qualitative parts there. So I think, I think I addressed the typos in there and the new one that you would approve is the one titled with update correction. Any questions?
Any more questions on this one? Okay, so a motion to approve this monitoring report? Second. Discussion. Johnson.
Hi.
Moen. Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
The next one is the executive limitation treatment of students' parents. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these. I think. I think that's the aspects is that safety and security of ensuring that we have these things in place. Unless there's any other specific questions. And there weren't significant changes from last, exactly one limitation report last year to now.
I sent a couple of questions, I think I emailed them to you before and I can't find them now, but one was, there was something in there about substitute teachers. Who have we seen? And again, I know these are unusual times. And I know that the standard, because I got something in the email about being a substitute teacher and you need a high school diploma, I think is what it was without anything else. Are we seeing, do we have a lot more subs? Because the question is, are the kids getting educated? And I know there's a shortage. I mean, I totally get that, that we're not in the salon or operating in the vacuum, but that was one, one question.
Yeah, um, for, I don't know if that one might.
That's the next one.
And one, two.
Oh, is it? Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I'm, I'm happy to answer it now.
I have no questions on this one.
Do you want us, can we move forward with this one?
I do approve this one.
I was waiting, Elizabeth, she was looking.
I don't have any.
Okay, so can I get, get a motion to approve and accept this monitoring report? I guess, again?
Yep, I think we're accepted for it. No additional discussion.
No additional discussion, go for a vote.
Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Alright, this is the one.
No worries. So I talked with Marcia Wymer and we have, we have interesting in that we have more folks who are staying home to, because they might have symptoms. So it's not that we need, we're happy we're subs, we just have more to be for us of. And so trying to make sure we're doing, doing these things well. And so in previous years, we had about forty subs and this year we have fifty, so we actually have more. And there is in this time of COVID, we can license, a temporary license for someone who does not have a college degree. And that's just for one year. And I asked Marcia, we have approximately four people who fall into that category right now. She hired a new person yesterday, so those, those announcements really do help to sort of say, here's, here's what we need. So we're thankful for that. Is that the?
Yep.
Might be a huge source of people going back to school, getting their degree and getting licensed.
So I think we continue to work through our, our HR processes and specifically Title IX was aspect. I think, Jack, you also asked a good question about CPR and certification. We had, as you all know, we had two new nurses, so we've got to make sure that that continuity and transition. So we had, we've had twelve who completed the, the online. Who can speak to it as well. And then we have twelve more who need to take it in January. We're still working through the new staff, new to the district who need to be trained. So those things are in motion now.
So.
Did I miss anything?
There's a PSA that, that, you know, doctors are given drugs for years to people that have cardiac arrest or whatnot. But data now shows that all the managers who survive a cardiac arrest is really high quality CPR and access to an AED and somebody that knows how to use it. So those are like legitimate, typically, I know, I don't think the AEDs have been used here at least in six or four years. But that's a big deal because that could save somebody's life and Anthony Springs Fire is great and they're right down the street unless they're not. So those would be, I mean, everybody that should, that is mandated to be certified, council should be do that. I'm not sure about an online course, I mean, I've had top courses for years, it seems like, but online is way different than pushing somebody's chest.
We would agree. The, the transition with the, our hiring of those folks and starting school. And so a lot of that was recertification, not an initial, but right. So the twelve, the January meeting will be in person then. So. And then you also asked about staff to lead. Right now, we didn't have anyone who's specifically training on that, but if someone would like it, there's also another online module there. So continuing to build our density as we, we build our, our health team. We have two, for all of you, we have two health, we have two nurses, one elementary and one secondary. And now we have two health techs, one at Manitou Elementary School and then one who goes between our two, our two secondary. So we have more health professionals than we have previous years, so it's been that positive.
I get a motion to accept the treatment of staff, faculty and staff executive limitations.
So there's a discussion. Second.
Very close emotion, sorry. Okay, and the second was.
So there's one more question on the, and I know there's a typo on the culture. Culture and climate survey, is that, is that one did in twenty twenty-one? I can't find it on the document right this minute, but didn't we do that in spring of twenty twenty-one, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
So I think it's the spring of twenty twenty. I'm trying to get twenty twenty as far behind this as possible. The paragraph from the bottom, I think, something like that.
Spring of twenty.
Spring of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
And I, as I recall at a board meeting, I tried to look for them, I didn't have, have time to do it. But I thought we talked about cycling through that a little more rapidly to see if there's any changes or things that we can do to help the staff out. I could be misremembering that, but, but I think we talked about that at a board meeting, not waiting for a full year. Am I misremembering that? And again, I didn't have a chance to look at the minute.
I'd have to go back, but yeah, we talked about doing it sooner on perhaps specific key issues relating to staff.
More poker survey.
I remember the wanting feedback around late starts Wednesdays sooner than later, as that was tied to some of these indicators and the survey. That's, that's what I recalled. And we did that, we, we implemented a initial survey for late start Wednesdays, see if those were a good use of time. And then we'll, we'll do those again in December. I, I, I don't recommend this and here's why, from a measurement perspective, measurement perspective. You have a whole new staff who then complete a survey in, let's say, October or so, which is good feedback. But we literally want that time to, to, to be able to say, alright, here's from, from this year to next year. And so when you're, when you're talking about. And so when you're, when you're talking about culture and climate, it doesn't change quickly, or it could change very fast, like something else happens. So I would, I've never seen a, a school district have culture and climate frequently. I mean, I think our best hope is that through our listening sessions that are coming up, those will happen in the winter of December, that we're getting real time feedback. Through other measures, through the DAC, or some of our new accountability systems internally with the DAC, which we haven't had before. I, I believe that we're going to get some of that feedback in, in a more real time way. So after each DAC, what we talked about, which shares ways for them to put information back to their act. That's, that's my recommendation, we give a lot of surveys to staff, and one more survey. Is, is, is not necessarily better, so I'd, I'd rather us work on the quality of, of feedback from individuals, and so that, that's my call.
But thinking about that, though, then if it got a survey, then when you mentioned DAC subcommittees, et cetera, people coming forward, when would we get those reports?
So they'll be recording in December too.
Yes.
So, so they'll report.
It's on, it's on our calendar.
All report in December, and they'll also report in April separately from the culture and climate.
So is that a survey of DAC members, or is that the DAC surveys? Because obviously, the, the survey of the DAC members is going to be a significant selection bias, because there's certain people that are going to volunteer to do that sort of stuff, and they're maybe not representative of the whole staff.
It wouldn't be a survey, it's really just a, a communication link between folks who are on the DAC to the folks that they're serving. So if it's a member of the DAC, who's, who's staff member at me, it's elementary school, what types of things are popping up? But no, I, it's not a survey, it's more of a, I don't know, looking at Natalie to say, salute for receiving feedback, accountability to the action plan as well. And I do think it's working. Yes. So I hope, we'll see what information we get in the next time, but.
Destiny, input or thoughts on that?
With the, the back survey you're referencing. You know, Elizabeth, you're talking about more opportunities, not necessarily a survey, but more opportunities for staff to have a voice. And so I would simply look for what are those new opportunities for staff to have a voice? And is that effective? That's what I would look more forward on this particular topic. Is, are they, are they having the platforms and the opportunities to be heard? And is that working effectively, or do we need adjustments?
And how do we know? Because there's that concept of kind of, you know, frequently checking it, do you have what you need to do your job? What could you better, what do we need to stop doing? That sort of stuff, I mean, frequent check-ins, they call it rounding in medicine, which now everybody else has taken that term about, which is great. But, but if you stretch that out too long, in my opinion, I mean, I used to check on my guys all the time, I mean, every day. So it's a little different setting than the school, than in the emergency department, but, but how do you know if the DAC feedback is working? Or if it's a representative sample? And I don't have any, I don't know if there's any data or any information that lets us know that that's accurate and reflects what the kind of rank and file staff. And I know we've got like fifty new staff, so that may make.
That's right. Yeah.
But may, may skew the survey, because we've had such a significant turnover, I mean, quarter of the staff, or whatever the number is, so it might be hard to compare apples to apples. But at least we have some sort of information, because we look at this end statement, which I was having a book to approve. But, but are we really getting the information we need to understand the end statement itself? Because there's, there's not much data there, if that makes sense.
Well, well, I would add is that we've never done a climate survey before, and so to do that and to have measures like an action plan that we currently have. So you add a whole nother layer of a survey that, with all of these other factors, from a measurement perspective. I think that makes a lot of sense where it is, and that's not because I don't seek feedback, or I'm afraid of, or, or staff are afraid to do that. Just, there's also a whole lot of value to culture. Being able to be in a place where you can share feedback, non-anonymed, I know that's hard enough, all folks want that, like, the best data on data. There feels comfortable and confident to sit next to me and say, this isn't working. I feel like that's what we're working, we're really working towards in our, in our action plans. And so that would be, my best hope is that we keep, we keep a solid one in the spring, or whenever it wants to be given. But multiple times, and you're changing your metrics all the time with new staff, it's, we haven't gone through a full cycle yet, so that's fine.
So if not that survey, and that's fine, I completely hear what you're saying, what information would we get back in December? Through the DAC representative process from the schools, to the DAC, to the DAC subcommittees, to us?
You're going to get feedback, and we're working through this now, because we have never had our DAC function this way. And, and so they're going to be looking at the action plan, so how are we monitoring our work towards those strategic indicators and the action plan? So, you know. How are we working towards some of the indicators that we put in there from the, from the climate service? So are these, are these key actions helping us to get to that? And that, that may be a little bit more anecdotal, but it is going to be feedback as we're working through this cycle of never having a strategic action plan. Never having climate survey data, so really, I think staying close with this type of pathway makes a lot of sense. I also don't want to sort of jerk around the DAC, right? It, it's important for us to implement this new strategy with high quality feedback from them as well. So I would say, Tina, it's, it's going to be a process that we will, we're working towards with internally. I don't have, like, here's the report.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is, you have specific items from the survey, right?
Built into that.
Built into it, right? And they're going to be reporting out on that in December, right? And some of those are related to staff.
Right, yeah, notice I'm concerned about, or considering is the staff, feedback of the staff. And then how they're doing with the action plan, I mean, maybe, I'm not saying do one today or tomorrow, or even November, but maybe halfway through the year to get kind of a, a pulse check, if you will. So you stop CPR for not very long and check for a pulse.
Well, I think we are doing part of the, the late start Wednesday, the TLC and the TFS. One of their, their indicators was, we don't have time to collaborate, and so let's get some feedback. So I think picking these, some of these strategic implementation strategies is. Thinking about all the things we're trying to accomplish this year. This is, and also just creating that, those cycles through those listening sessions are really important, and we'll be scheduling this soon. So happy to share out what, what comes from those as well. Happy for a board member to attend one of those, I think it's.
That's what I was going to ask, like, that might be something even more interesting than reading through.
Yes.
Hearing the dialogue.
When we schedule those, I could, you know, is there a board member who wants to attend, attend one? I think, I think those are great opportunities. We, we've adjusted a lot of practices from just listening.
No, I'm satisfied with multi-means of information. There's a lot of data, anecdotal qualitative as well as quantitative.
Yeah, my, my interest is less on, on, on the survey, and if you're good to do the survey, but moving more toward what we discussed at the beginning of today, which is really cultivating collaborative cultures. Which would allow for your reference of you and Gary having an open and honest discourse. But when that isn't happening, we have to determine why. And address the core root of that issue to allow for open honest discourse. To happen, because then it's happening real time, every second of every day.
Yes.
Rather than, I'm going to hold my pent up frustrations for one year and then let you have it on the survey.
That's right, I agree, one of the things that, that Bonnie said about, and actually. Not this meeting, but the next meeting, our whole leadership team is going to be going through a practice of. Developing their own strategies for facilitating, facilitating meetings and whatever type of meeting, so that we don't wait till something has screwed up for a long period of time. What's going on, let's get to that. They're all going to be, as well as myself, going to be going through that process. So the idea too is that it's not just our leadership, some who's facilitating, it's that we can build that into the flow. We have a lot of students who do that very, very well already.
I'd agree, that's probably the best feedback, where there's a trusting relationship where you can do that. And that makes that, that's the most valuable, I would think, because that's real time feedback.
For sure, and it gives empowerment and ownership.
One good example is when I sat with the DAC for the first time, the group, the subgroup of the leverage point that I sat with was leverage point one. That was really having, that we meaningfully can understand the strategic outcomes, leverage points. And just in about forty-five minutes, we developed some ways to better, better communicate that. Because one of the things that someone said was, and very, very stuteously said, just give us the whole action plan, it's okay, like, we don't need. So like, it's, it's a secret thing, they're like, it's not secret, so let's share it. So I just think having that, that feedback is, is really important, freedom spaces. Like I said, I'm not anti-getting the frequent surveys of feedback. Still, there are lots. Would be my recommendation.
Any more discussion on this?
Is the timing of this prepared, I think, then? On it closer to the after the seminar, or?
I see it all as cyclical, so it's fine with me, right? I mean, it just seems to be a continuous, and we'll get into that cycle, so I see it as never ending, not like a start and finish. I know we tend to see the school year as that, but usually when we're looking at data at this level, it's taking what's almost a year and a year's, bringing it forward, and then matching it up with the next cycle of data. So I see it as ongoing.
Then I guess after, when the cultures, and there's other, that action plan is not built solely only on the, the culture survey, so. That, each of that, I think we did that in March, or April, I can't remember, so we can follow back of the action.
I think that would be good, we have a retreat in this January to hear what we hear in monitoring reports in December, November and December. And then say, what else do we need to hear in January, of what else do we want to know?
Is there something from the DAC that, for that first December? Process that would be helpful from those leverage points, other than. Very yellow, and I can, can really articulate that, but it's, it's, it's going to be meaningful work, it's already started to feel different than previous staffs. And we've done great work in previous years, so looking forward to it.
Good? Okay, just need a vote?
Johnson. Hi. Owen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
David. Aye.
One and aside, all of our principals, they also do a preschool, they get feedback from their, their staff in the fall, so they get that feedback sooner.
Was that something that we would see, or get a summary of? Because obviously, that's probably even closer than kind of a district survey.
Um, I've never, we've never given their surveys to the board, it usually just stayed with me and their feedback of, and their improvements.
Would you want to just give us, like, some big picture thoughts on that? I mean, so not like, and here's the middle school, here's the high school, whatever, just like, here's, here's what we maybe collectively learned from it.
Yeah, I think, I could, I could prepare that up.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't even have to be preparation, or like just some thoughts on it, because I know that's a new process as well.
Yeah, they started that last year.
You're right, still fairly new, especially given the circumstances, just to say, what are we learning from this? Yeah, thanks, policy development. We needed to add in some wording to our current policy around student suspension, expulsion and denial.
Yes, the, the main line there is for children.
Yeah, students in preschool through second grade, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, that's right.
If you want to talk at all about. Hold on, the school's. What the Colorado Revised Statute twenty-two, thirty-three, what are those items that are stated there, the only ways a child of that age can be suspended?
Sorry, are you talking about in red?
Yeah, when it does reference the Colorado Revised Statutes, there's very specific reasons why you would be able to suspend a child of that grade level.
You know, Tina, I, I can't answer that right, right way, without looking at that more, but I know.
I can remember three out of the four, I think.
I, I couldn't name them specifically, but that, that's what we would follow. It's, it's so unusual for this to happen, I don't know, Maria and Chris, the last time you suspended someone ever, not since I've been there. Can you argue the second grade suspension?
Oh, I, I. A while. Long time. Not generally. I, I can't remember the last time we did it. Yeah.
Right, Tina, I.
No, I mean, I just, for the good of the whole, why, because I thought there was, in case there's more discussion about why would you suspend a child that age? Or why would you not suspend a child of your age?
Has shown to have zero efficacy, actually.
Yeah, and developmentally causing trauma, but a lot of the reasons for a child that age, that it has to have some pretty violent, aggressive activities, weapons, et cetera. To cause a suspension, and even then, it states that you have to do a significant amount of preventative. Course of action before you get to that point, it just knows that that's a voice to concern about, so.
Well, I would extend it through twelfth grade. Because I don't know why you would suspend anyone, I mean, the people that are suspended are exhibiting behaviors that are calling for help. We want to find those that are indeed, those are the ones that are indeed, that's one indicator, so rather than send them home. I would recommend our policy works with them. To, to find the root cause, that's how we, you know, later and remedy the behavior, I tend to suspend it. It provides more opportunity to do whatever it is you're, you're doing, which is again. To me, it's in my field especially, it's, it's a call for help, so I, I don't know what. You know, if, if this is our. Pension, expulsion policy. I guess we're at a moment where we can.
Well, I mean, right now, we're just discussing adding this to our current policy, we would have to get out our current policy and probably have, add that to a work session, discussion, to see if we wanted to go that way. I think there'd probably be a lot of research and discussion about taking a no suspension policy up through twelfth grade.
This, this, um, this one comes back up in March, it's January third. So, you know, maybe by, by that time can have more, I mean, the, the reality too is making sure that we have viable option alternatives to suspension. That can be restorative, that can be educational, and all those things. So that might be something that we can work through in work sessions around this particular policy up until March. As kind of a looking out, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, I like that idea, because you have so great, you, you know, we will need and want avenues and paths. To take, you know, what are, what are the process? But a lot of times we're guessing through grades or attendance, these are red flags saying, come on over, I need help. So for us to use those opportunities, then it would be for our benefit and to the kids and district.
Meantime. In this, this is a, we need to amend our state law and add this to our, our policy, do we have what?
And then Dr. Vision, Jake.
Can we get a second? Any discussion about the language, the wording, anything? Vote.
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi. You need to look at the board development annual work plan?
For that other policy, you don't move it to consent or it needs to be your policy.
Oh, we didn't add it. Where is it at?
Well, on the electronic one.
Okay, sorry, I was working off the notes.
Yes.
You know, you can't give me too many things. Okay, where is it?
Um, it's only electronically.
Oh, I see, I see under board development.
Add, see, I see. Content to it.
Okay, so we can.
Can we move approval of the new and improved BDBs? Replace the two prior BDBs?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, excellent. Get a second. Excellent. Any discussion? Enough discussion here to vote.
Johnson. Mo. Sharon.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so the work plan, looking through this, seeing if it's still what we do and what we want to do. There's a couple of things on here that I noticed that seem maybe not completely congruent. So wanna see if anybody else saw anything that kind of they would, hmm, I'm not so sure about that.
So this is already in board docs as a policy?
Yeah, this is.
Okay, this is our current policy.
Sorry, in our governing policy. So we can further define it, we can change it if we have to, or we can just clarify for ourselves to make sure we are operating within our own policies. Anything you find interesting, anything you notice, some protocols before everybody in our audience falls asleep?
Small font.
A small font.
Right? I got mine on a PDF and have to enlarge it.
I think it's good, as far as, or as a good review for myself to look at and say, okay, am I doing these things? Thanks, keep myself in my own police and set off. And I see one of the ones that could, you know, that we could, you know, could get abused usually is, you know, the BSU one point, two point two. And I think, you know, all of us have to look at as a whole, so staff, their work, they're busy, they're, is this really important?
Anyone else, any wonderings, any clarity that we need to talk about?
You want to throw yours out?
When you think about it, only officially passed motions of the board are binding on the superintendent. We asked Elizabeth a million times a meeting to do twenty things, right? And we actually talked about this earlier today, just in passing, like, do we want an officially passed motion for everything? I mean, and I think we talked about this even when we started as a board together, the five of us, like, how detailed do we want to be? I mean, you can get lost in Robert's rules and policy and become extremely formal and procedural and focus on solely policy and procedure. And then lose all focus on content perhaps. So it, it really just gets in, but these are discussions to have now. Because once things go awry and you try and have those discussions, it's not so good. And so that's the whole point of reviewing our policy regularly, asking for clarifying questions, saying, what does this mean? What do we agree to as a group? Because in two more years, you know, we could have three new people with us and that could change completely.
Yeah.
So right now, it's sometimes just calling an unofficial agreement that we've agreed to operate this way. Doesn't necessarily say verbatim in our, our policy that we will.
No, I agree in that, that's been up to me running through this. I don't know what to replace it. I don't like the way it's stated because of the way we operate, we are operating quote unquote more small town. And less on all the technicalities, so requiring a motion for everything that we intend to be binding may be excessive in our near, in our district, not just stopping it, but having to pass the motion.
Each and every time. So I'm just, you know, again, I was, I don't forget when it was, a couple Saturday mornings ago. And I was having coffee and I was just sending different policies to Elizabeth. I'm like, does this seem right? Does that seem right? And she's probably like, Tina, get a life. And I know many people say these things to me, but I, I, I just want to make sure I do the best job that I can as long as in this position for us to be on the up and up. And it's okay if we decide to just keep doing like we're doing and this maybe seems too confining, but we need to know that. We need to read to that, if that makes sense. We can't, we can't wait then and call each other out later on it, right? Or then we have to change it. So we're not going to do it tonight, so don't worry, we're not going to stop and dig deeply into this. But these are the kinds of things that during our retreat and when we get into board, our policy practices, we do need to put on our work sessions to address.
Well, for me, the way, when y'all approve this, this annual monitoring report, to me, that is my guide to get things to all under, under the schedule. So to me, I feel like that is a motion that really binds me that it holds to. We're gonna, we're gonna get these reports on these, on these dates. And I, just so you know, I make notes throughout the year that for the next time we adopt this, that we've made those changes. So for example, I'm going to add here principal feedback from survey, I'll give a summary in December. That's wasn't approved, but I'll do that, of course, this year, that's the problem. And then next year, when you approve this, this annual planning calendar, it's already built in and we don't have to review that. So this to me is probably the motion that lets you all know where we're going the most. And within that, and all the end statements.
So you're saying you're making a statement until we do it?
I think, yeah, I, I see how you all see this is, this could be problematic, but and it's, it's different than what we operate as. But it's not, the way we operate is, is great, so I don't see an issue, but you're right, it may not always.
So that's, that's all I'm saying, is if, if we're thinking we want to dig more into it, it's probably, it's not going to be tonight, it's going to have to be somewhere else. We can approve it tonight with the agreement that we understand we're going to continue as is.
We're not required to approve it. No, just report.
But we'll have to decide if we want to dig into it or not. Okay, go.
Okay.
Do you want to set it, when would you want to do that? When would this group like to dig into this more and maybe even, you know, really go chunk by chunk?
We have other policies that what coming with the.
Can I, I'm looking at the, the calendar.
So the whole, like, for your, for the policy work, for the, the board policy work, this is a big chunk. And so if you wanted to, to push this and table the whole, uh, whole part next week, next month, the next one is board performance. But this is the real meaty part.
This is, this is, yeah.
Or just that unity of control. Or in superintendent.
I'm sure once we get into it, there's going to be more than just that. Even the monitoring of performance, systematic and rigorous monitors, superintendent job performance will be solely against the only expected superintendent job outfits accomplished by policies on ends, et cetera, right?
When is the year your review is that January?
I'm sorry?
The yearly superintendent review is that January or is that later, or is that April? I can't remember.
January is the review. And that might be something we also want to talk about is just to review the document in the format of the evaluation. Make sure everybody, this will be, so you're three already?
Yeah.
So probably want to try to review this before that, I would think. But not tonight.
But if not tonight, then another night.
Or another day, as we have our retreat, this would be fantastic retreat fodder, probably.
Retreat fodder. Sure. Yeah, I mean.
Good for that.
Okay.
It's time to reflect.
Listen to your.
Retreat fodder. Okay. I'm good if we move it to the retreat and then we'll get into legislative updates. What specifics did you have on those two?
I don't really have any. I just think more importantly, these are already on the ballot. And so I just, it's unfortunate that they, they ask for feedback for things that are already on the ballot. Sometimes I feel like the CASM delegate is too late, the delegate's somewhere, but it's okay.
It's way too late, everybody's already got their mail-in ballots and they've had them now.
And they have already, they've taken a stance on these two.
Okay.
I don't really have any more updates. The delegate assembly will be important.
All right, then just left is reflection on our purpose. See, everybody really excited.
Thanks, Gary.
I want to go, Gary.
All right, good reflection, friends. All right. I get a motion to adjourn. Second?
Johnson. Hi, Bowen. Sharon.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.